Meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call Roe, please.
Deputy Mayor, Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
Hi.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. And Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
And I'm not sure about Councilmember Weiss.
Councilmember Weiss will not be here this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So could you please rise for the invocation? Tonight we have Father Ray Evangelista from St. Mary's Star of the Sea Church. And this year, St. Mary's celebrated 95 years of being, of this church being here on Peer View Way and 129 years originally, the original chapel that is on Lemon Street. So this is, this was a very great celebration. Thank you, Father Ray, for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well now, with ourselves in the presence of God, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Loving Father, source of all gifts and blessings, we ask you to be with us as we are having our city council meeting. We ask you to send your Holy Spirit to enlighten our hearts and minds with the gifts of your wisdom and guidance. We ask you to bless our city council, all our civic leaders, public servants, department heads, chairpersons of different city organizations, and all our constituents. May the city of Oceanside continue to prosper away from any bad element, to be always safe, joyful, and peaceful even in our cultural diversity. May you create in us a teamwork in exerting all the efforts and providing the city an outstanding service in accordance to your holy will. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns within the unity of the Holy Spirit. God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Ray, from St. Mary's Star of the Sea Church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Please remain standing and for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. Renovation under God in the visual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we have proclamation in honor of the 17th Annual O-Side Turkey Trot: Move Your Feet Before You Eat. Kathy, come on down. You have several people with you, right? 17th annual. This year is a true partnership with the city of Oceanside. We've got a contract and it's, we're celebrating Move Your Feet Before You Eat, part of this really pretty fantastic event. If you would like to gather here on this side so we can, so the cameras can check you all out. And I, I was really especially excited to see Officer Sandoval, still call him Officer Sandoval, who was always there when I was growing up in the East Side. And everybody still considers him, you know, this phenomenal officer in our, in our neighborhood. And we still think of him fondly. Well, why can't other officers be like Officer Sandoval was? Well, you know, he's still being a mentor here because he's very, very much involved with the O-Side Turkey Trot. So Kathy, I'm going to read this and then I'm going to hand you the mic. And it's short this time. Proclamation in honor of 17th Annual O-Side Turkey Trot: Move Your Feet Before You Eat Day. Whereas the Oceanside Turkey Trot promotes healthy lifestyles across North San Diego County through advocacy, financial support, and its own in-school running and walking program called Miles of Smiles. And whereas over the past 17 years, the Oceanside Turkey Trot has raised more than $450,000 for Oceanside schools and nonprofit organizations. And whereas the Oceanside Turkey Trot connects local community organizations, nonprofits, and businesses to generate over $1 million in economic impact for our city. And whereas the Oceanside Turkey Trot brings together thousands of residents from across Oceanside and San Diego County, as well as draws visitors from over 46 states and 460 cities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2022 to be Move Your Feet Before You Eat Day in the city of Oceanside. Isn't that cool?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Sanchez. And I just want to recognize some of the people here today. I want to thank you for supporting the trot for the past 16 years. And tonight we have a portion of our Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation Board. We have a team of our coordinators and our volunteers who are very excited to be celebrating our 17th year. We are so thankful for the sponsors who have supported the event, the students and community members who have made it all happen. It takes a team of 40-plus coordinators and 450 volunteers to execute this event and have our participants enjoy this great celebration of health and family on Thanksgiving while getting in their miles of smiles, walking, running, or trotting. And I'd like to introduce Richard Musio, who is the co-founder of both the Oceanside Turkey Trot and the foundation. And I'd like to introduce a couple of board members that I have here. This is Rio. And we have Ruben Sandoval, as we mentioned, Adrienne Hakes, and Gary Nissom, who are working hard on our board. And this is a very special proclamation and a big evening for us on our 17th anniversary. And I want to thank all my coordinators who are here tonight for a training meeting for coming and joining us. Thank you.
We're going to get a picture, but you're going to say, well, can you still sign up? And where can you get your stuff?
So Richard's going to speak and do a little five-minute presentation. But yes, you can register at oside-turkeytrot.com. And when you register, there's a menu of 85 different schools and charities that you can pick from to give $5 of your entry fee too. Thanks for the reminder.
Well, you are the best. And here is the proclamation. I want you to be able to hold on to that. Thank you. And we're going to take a picture? Yes?
Mine is in front of these two tall ones.
Okay. Somehow, let me see.
That works.
Does it work?
Yeah.
Get rid of all this stuff here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So we're looking forward to this. Remember, Thanksgiving morning, where are you going to be?
Downtown Oceanside. Move Your Feet Before You Eat.
Thank you. Thank you all. See you soon. See you in a week. Next, we have Mayor's Business Spotlight. And tonight, very, very special, we have Carly Starr, Executive Director of KOCT. She's being honored tonight with Scott Ashton, our Executive Director for the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Carly, usually we see her, you know, behind the scenes. She might, you know, see, oh, you've got a little bit of shine right there. She takes care of us. And I have to say that when she came to KOCT, it's like, okay, big shoes to fill. And she has really, really met that and exceeded that. I have to say that. Thank you so much for, for really shining the light on different parts of Oceanside and showing what a wonderful community we are here and, you know, allowing these community shows to continue. Always the concern that, gee, you know, maybe the economy won't allow this to continue. And it has, and it's been very strong. And I so thank you very much for all of your efforts have been fantastic and for the chamber to be honoring you, Carly. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Really appreciate this opportunity to publicly thank Carly and her team at KOCT for everything that they've meant to our community for 41 years now. So that's quite an accomplishment. And we're just grateful for all the outreach you do to us and the opportunities that you give to the chamber. But more importantly, to the rest of the community, the voice that you provide for our nonprofit organizations, our local sports teams, our political candidates, and just for the information that you are bringing to our community, including live events like tonight. So we just want to thank you for everything that you've done for Oceanside and all that you mean to our community.
And I just want to say, I see Colleen Foster here. We were just together about a week ago doing an educational piece on zero waste, what to do. I got to cap, you know, like figure out what to do with this cardboard box and then toss it. That was my part in this promo piece. But it's, it's really exciting because it really does, we need to get people to know about what's happening with like zero waste and the organics, all of that. We need to, you know, we really needed, need to have that kind of media and you're there for us, Carly. So I'm going to hand the mic to you.
Hello. I'm not that great on the microphone normally. I know, right? Let's get the blue out. I just wanted to thank the Board of Directors and my team, Team KOCT, as we refer to them. It's not for the faint of heart, what we do every day. Takes a lot of passion and love for our community to just keep going. And the subjects here are just amazing to work with, you know, from the mayor to the city hall to education. You know, it's amazing to have the honor to spotlight our city every day, day in, day out. So thank you so much for watching KOCT. So thanks.
Thank you. So we've got a picture here.
In the middle?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There was no closed session on item one, so there's nothing to report on that item. Item two was conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the matter of Aguirre versus Manson Construction Company. The council did meet and give direction on that item, but there is no reportable action under the Brown Act under item 2A1. Item 2A2 was not discussed in closed session. Finally, the council did meet on item three, which is a real property negotiation involving the pier restaurant and kiosk building located at One Peer View Way. Negotiating parties are City of Oceanside and OS Pier LLC. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of real property. Again, the council did meet and discuss that item. There's no action to report under the Brown Act at this time.
Thank you. And even though we can't report out now, I know the whole city is really anxious to see what, you know, that restaurant opened at the end of the pier. So it's coming, folks, it's coming. All right, we've got consent calendar items five through 15. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion.
There's a motion by Deputy Mayor Keim, second.
Second.
There's a second by Councilmember Rodriguez. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. We do have, let's see. Sorry. We do have a general item, that is Council item number 16, introduction of an ordinance to amend Article 10 of the City of Oceanside Municipal Traffic Code in Chapter 29A, Article 5 of the City of Oceanside City Code, adoption of a resolution updating the regulation and restrictions for harbor parking lots 1 through 5. And tonight we have a report by Ted Shifon, our Harbor Division Manager.
Good evening.
For a little while longer.
Yes, a little while longer. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Councilmembers, Ted Shifon, Harbor Division Manager. Tonight I am presenting some modifications to parking code at Oceanside Harbor. Staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend Article 10 of the City of Oceanside Municipal Traffic Code and Article 5 of Chapter 29A of City of Oceanside City Code. So a little background, traffic code at Oceanside Harbor was developed decades ago. The Harbor District is a visitor-serving business and the modes of transportation have been changing over those decades. So adjustments to ordinances will allow for better safety and parking efficiency. One of the issues that we have at Oceanside Harbor is that none of the parking lots were designed for oversized vehicles. And many people now are traveling to the harbor, whether it's in a transit van, a bus, motor home, or an attached trailer. And these types of vehicles simply do not fit in any of our parking lots, which makes it dangerous not only for the driver, but for the pedestrians around those areas. In some cases, they need to take up as many as six spaces in order to fit into the harbor. Another issue we have at Oceanside Harbor is that there's a 30-minute timed parking space in front of each slip gate, and those spaces are necessary for sliprunners and service providers. Unfortunately, based on current code, there's no enforcement of those timed parking spaces on Sundays. So what we did several months ago was dedicate an area in Lot 1 and redesigned it to handle oversized vehicles, motor homes, trucks with trailers, transit vans. Spaces are wider, the aisleways are longer, making it much safer for these vehicles to get in and out. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back. So what the code is asking for is that currently these motor homes and large-sized vehicles can still park anywhere in Lot 1. What we want to do is be able to enforce the fact that they need to park in this special area in Lot 1. The other change that we're asking is that simply these 30-minute parking zones are enforceable 365 days a year. This way, no one commandeers a parking space for a Sunday and makes it difficult for sliprunners and service providers to get to dock. So staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend Article 10 of the City of Oceanside Municipal Traffic Code and Article 5 of Chapter 29 of City of Oceanside City Code. And that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shifon. Are there any requests to speak from the public?
We have no request on this item.
All right. Councilmember Rodriguez.
How will this impact the city of Oceanside on a budgetary standpoint, from a budgetary standpoint, to enforce this new ordinance?
So Lot 1 is enforced anyway by code enforcement. So now they'll simply have the ability to ensure that oversized vehicles park in the space. Sinage will be produced that indicates they need to park in the space. It shouldn't impact them at all, other than the fact that now they have a special way to enforce that.
So that, including the 30-minute parking on Sundays? I don't, do we, do we currently have code enforcement on Sundays enforcing?
We don't typically, but this did come to light by the fact that an individual was ticketed on a Sunday and knew the code, and it brought it to our attention. And I'm not really certain if that was parking enforcement. I believe it was during the summer, so it could have been on a Sunday that they were, it was enforced.
Okay. Is there going to be additional fees charged to the oversized vehicles in those parking lots? Has that fee structure been updated or is they pay the same amount as anyone?
At this point, there's no fee structure for Lot 1. It's a free parking lot.
Okay. Okay. I would like to see, I'm going to move approval, but I would like to see some sort of coordination with code enforcement on, you know, enforcing this new ordinance. Obviously, it's about to be in effect. And, but other than that, I move approval.
All right, there's a motion to introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolution. And there is a second by Deputy Mayor Keim. No other requests to speak. On the dais, please vote.
I need to introduce the ordinance, Mayor.
Yes.
This is the introduction of, the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Article 10 of Oceanside Traffic Code and amending Chapter 29A of the Oceanside City Code.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Let's go to items, item number 18, we have an advance request to speak by Christine Ann Russell. Is Ms. Russell here? Ms. Russell, please approach the podium, and you have up to five minutes to speak. And you have written here that you would like to speak on solutions for residential As she is moving her way forward, how many requests do we have to speak on items not on the agenda?
Currently, right now, we have two.
Okay, so just speaking to the mic, you might want to lower it for yourself.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Russell.
Hi. All right. I'm a stage four cancer patient on active chemo and former naval officer and have done many things on the journey, managing cybersecurity, systems engineering, systems analysis, and I was a public and private math and science teacher. I'm sorry that I failed South Oceanside residents with not stopping the development in our backyard on South Tremont Street. I was leading the petitions and signatures and then fell sick with COVID and fell out of remission in Fall of '21. I had gotten signatures and the petition, including therapy fitness business. I'm sorry that no one from the Safe South Oceanside Group appealed what happened at the planning commission to the city council. I was very ill from March through August. I don't understand how a proposal can be allowed where the city accepts fees from a developer and then it takes on a whole new life force where safety and environmental issues are left blank in an original application. That doesn't make sense to me as a former safety and environmental officer. The city of Oceanside map viewer needs to be updated real time as folks like myself and others have differences and we rely on that tool. And this was displaying deceptive information in October 2022, as it said that the project still was under review and not approved as of October 4, 2022. This is really bad practices regarding public information for residents and developers and the city and the county and the state when a simple tool isn't even accurate or real time. To continue moving forward and leaving the past behind, we need, we need help from local historians. We need to protect South Coastal Oceanside and get the area protected with the Office of Historic Preservation. Some things may already be protected. Possibly, we can pray for our developer to buy out D-21-0012 mercantile lofts and build a one-story museum and garden in lieu of what I consider to be a cluster bomb. When demolitions occur, all residents in a neighborhood need to be informed via slips in their mailboxes when it's going to occur. We got notice in our mailboxes about the project proposal, but not about the day of demolition. I woke up at 7:30, the buildings crashing down a couple feet from where I reside. I had attempted to get information from the city. The city was out of pocket. Had I known, I would have vacated the premises for a week or so. I served in the Middle East. I was an environmental compliance officer. I was a battalion safety officer. And when you demolish a building, there are things that go into the, into the air that do get carried in the wind, that do have negative impact on personnel breathing. And if they have compromised immune systems, they do not want to be in the area. The alleys, some kind of deterrents needs to be set up in the alleys across the city of Oceanside because alleys are turning into a highway. When marijuana was voted in, it was to be used in private residence alone. It doesn't work in infrastructures that share common walls with businesses and residences. It does carry in the wind. It was never meant to be smoked outside. There is a population of the society that cannot be around this and deserve to enjoy the restaurants, beaches, not worry about getting sick from vaping, smoking, diffusing of marijuana. A city should require businesses to have some kind of visual, no smoking, no vaping, no diffusing signs. There is still a need to educate personnel that live within the city of Oceanside. The parking situation, when I resided in New England, we had to have a sticker that went along with the residents that we were leasing. So possibly you could have so many stickers per residence. Unfortunately, there is a limit, and parking could be enforced by giving tickets if they don't have a sticker on their windshield. Residents get sick, and the bottom line is a resident that's sick has to have a place to park. The city of Oceanside could further solicit ideas from the city, sending out flyers in all the residents' mailboxes throughout the city, asking for ideas on help, on how to help the parking crisis. Other than that, I don't have any other ideas for parking other than start having them put stickers because people do get sick and they need a place to park. And with all these cluster bombs going up, we have to implement things like that. Thank you very much for your time. God bless you. I appreciate the help and support.
Ms. Russell, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 19, which is communications from the public regarding items not on this agenda. Would you like to call out those two people? Or however many there are?
We have two members of the public wishing to speak on item number 19. Our first speaker is Arlene Hammerschmidt, to be followed by Michael Richardson.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. This is about the finances of the Elkor Zone Aquatic Center, which opened, as far as I could tell in my quick research this afternoon, August 2021, over a year ago. I remember that there was a projected income of reportedly expected to cover the wages and maintenance at least of Elkor Zone. I also remember that this was prior to council approval. I'm not saying I have a perfect memory, but to the best of my recollection, public was promised an update on the income and expense of the Elkor Zone Aquatic Center in six months after it had opened. This report to be given to us all by Parks and Recreation. It's now, over a year later, a year and three months or so. And so how long, how soon can we expect this report? You know, it's a, Mr. Rodriguez, if you would like to take this up in discussion afterward, I know you're all about the numbers and the finances, and I know you questioned this at the time. When can we expect this report that is almost a year overdue? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, staff. Do we have an anticipated date for that coming forward?
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, I'll have to take a look at what commitments were made during the meeting that Ms. Hammerschmidt referred to and can report back to council based on what I find, and including a projected date to get you that information if we had in fact committed to providing it to council.
Great. It will at least be brought up during budget hearings.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Next person?
Good evening.
As you all know, we just had an election, and we had a, a city councilman elected with less than 50% of the vote, actually only 40% of the vote in his district. And this is a situation that has happened in the last two years. Our mayor was elected with less than 50% of the vote. I think this is unacceptable to those of us who believe in democracy. I would respectfully request the council to start the process to change the election code so that the candidates for mayor and city council go through the primary process in June, like most other positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak?
There are no other requests to speak on this item.
All right. Do we have any comments by council members? Any requests to speak by council members? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and take a break. The next item is a 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock item, item number 17, timed certain at 6:00 p.m. So let's take a break until 6:00 p.m., and then we'll call that item. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and continue this meeting. It is now 6 o'clock. We call this meeting back to order. Item number 17 is Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Article 12 of the Zoning Ordinance and Adoption of a Resolution Establishing the amended, amended text of Article 12 as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program to include modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission. The proposed ordinance is exempt from SEQA review per Article 5, Section 15061, subsection B3, and does not include any additional text changes that were not previously reviewed and approved by the City Council. I'm going to go ahead and open up this public hearing, request disclosures from fellow council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Just staff.
Okay. No contact?
Steph.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and/or petitions?
We have not received any correspondence on this item.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin with a report from Sergio Madera. Sergio Madera, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, members of the City Council. The item for you is basically a cleanup item from a previous zone amendment that this council considered in February 2020. Staff recommends that the council introduce an ordinance amending Article 12 of the zoning ordinance and adopt the resolution establishing the amended text of Article 12 as the implementing document of the local coastal program to include modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission. A little bit of background, in February of 2020, the council introduced an ordinance to update the land use classifications in the downtown zoning district. The Downtown Advisory Committee staff report, it's included, it was always in the intent to include the proposed zoning text amendment as part of the original approval back in 2020 to expand tattoo establishments to other sub-districts within the downtown district. And the graphic here depicts the, the table associated with the Downtown Advisory Committee staff report. However, the legislative record for this action indicates that we omitted those additional sub-districts as part of the ordinance that was adopted by this council. In August of 2021, the council voted to introduce an ordinance to amend Article 36 to remove separation requirements for tattoo establishments from residential districts if an intervening freeway or state highway is located between the establishment and the proposed, or in the proposed establishment and residential district. As part of the certification process through California Coastal Commission, their staff identified the omission of allowing tattoo establishments in their identified sub-districts. The Coastal Commission's certification of that particular zoning text amendment is contingent on that item of Article 12 being cleaned up. And so therefore, item 42 is a technical requirement to make that certification final. The primary intent of the proposed amendment is to correct that omission, and it's subject, and it continues that tattoo establishments are subject to approval of a regulated, administrative, regulatory use permit. With that, we recommend that the council introduce the ordinance tonight. And that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Madera. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We don't have any requests to speak on this item.
This is a public hearing. This is a time set for the public to comment on this very specific item. You do not have to have previously submitted a slip for this. If you wish to comment, please approach one of the podiums and state your name, and then proceed to speak for up to three minutes. I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance? There's a motion in second. Did you want, wish to speak?
No.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion in second. Please vote.
I'll need to title, Mayor, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. This is the introduction.
Trying to beat that clock.
I know. This is Introduction of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, amending Article 12 of the zoning ordinance with modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. During the break, the shortness of the agenda was not anticipated by a couple of people who wanted to speak. And I believe there's only two people. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Navarro, why don't we go ahead and do that? We usually do have, you know, spend more time here on a council meeting, so go ahead and say who, okay.
Just be sure to state your name for the record.
My name for the record is Richard Newton. And, Honorable Mayor, members of the council and the public, I would like to discuss as an off-agenda item, last week's or last meeting's agenda, item number 15, which was the 51-acre giveaway for free to a developer. To give a summary to those who didn't see that, basically, the city entered into an agreement that it would give the developer 51 acres of land for free if only one of five, meaning only 20% of some appointed experts, determined that the return on cost for the developer was less than 10 and 1/2%. And that that decision would be final and unappealable by the city. And this agreement was entered into back in, I believe, 2013. And frankly, it is, it strikes a significant impropriety, and I think it needs to be reexamined, and I think the public should deserve transparency in this matter. If only one of five experts thinks that it didn't meet the developer's cutoff of 10 and 1/2%, the city gives away land for free. That means that 80%, four out of five of the other experts didn't think that was the case. The city is still bound to this giveaway. Furthermore, why was there, why was it made final at the time in 2013? It's almost like the developer found five suckers that would agree to it and just wanted to lock into that. The other thing is, why did the city not agree to a sliding scale? Let's say, for example, that the developer legitimately needed a 10 and 1/2% return on cost. Fair enough. They're an investor. They're working. They want a return on their money. Why wasn't there a sliding scale that if they were determined to have a 7 and 1/2% return, that the land, picking a number, let's say it's going for $1 million an acre, would be discounted to, say, $750,000 an acre? So the city would still get some money on it, and the developer would still get their 10 and 1/2% return. And on top of this, giving the land away, the City of Oceanside's got a pony up $15,000 in closing costs to pay for title policy for the buyer, buyer in quotes, who's getting the land for free. I feel like a sucker. I used to chase away people at the old recycling bins that were out on the curb. People would steal the aluminum, and I would chase them away, and I would say, you know what? You're stealing from the city. You're taking that aluminum. You're stealing from the city. And here I am, chasing people away for a few cents worth of aluminum, and it turns out the city's giving away $51 million of land for free. I can't put any other words other than that. I had hoped to have a better organized speech. I didn't get the opportunity to write it up as clearly and concisely as I'd like, but I would like the city to open it up for transparency. I think there's other agencies and other levels of government that sometimes investigate things like this, and I think it needs to be investigated. It's, it's either, the two reasons are either sheer stupidity or some other conflict of interest that needs to be made public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandra Martinez, and thanks for letting us talk about this. You know, someone sent me a video of the last meeting, and I could not believe how this thing, how Agenda Item 15 went down. You know, contracts are made to be broken, and anybody that entered into this contract either didn't know what they were doing or did know what they were doing. And I don't know why anybody would, in good conscience, go into this contract knowing that, what the possibilities were for the City of Oceanside. If I were a developer and I were going to get free land in 10 years on a prime location, 51 acres for sitting on my derriere and doing nothing, I would sit on my derriere and do nothing and get 51 free acres, not even paying closing costs. It makes absolute no sense. I think the city should fight this. I think the shitty city, sorry. I think the city should find a good contract attorney and deal with this. In addition, I think there should be an external investigation as to why this contract was forged as it was and why people went along with it, because it makes absolutely no sense for the city. Now, during last, or two weeks ago, presentation, the city personnel got up and talked about all the economic benefits. They don't even come close to the cost of the land benefits. Plus, you would have the cost of the land, plus the development, and the economic benefits. So either way, the City of Oceanside is being hurt by this, by this transaction. And I really do think we need to look at it and have a contract attorney do what they do best. I don't know, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but there are people that do this, and it needs to be looked at. One of the things, remember Keim mentioned, was that we need to stand by our word. Well, this contract was not written in good words. And I can only assume that the developer understood the contract and knew it was very beneficial to him or her. And to me, that may not have been a good faith to start with. So I think we're very entitled to review it and contest it and do what we need to do to protect the city and our financial interests. So thank you for listening, and again, thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda. I see that we have several students from Rancho Inavista, yes, here today. So thank you so much for visiting City Council. We happen to have a short meeting tonight. So if you'd like to have your, your slips signed, happy to do that after the meeting. There is one thing happening tomorrow that is a fundraiser. It's the First Annual Oceanside's Finest Basketball Clubs Fundraiser tomorrow, 5:30 to 8:30. It is for basketball for kids at El Corazon Senior Center. And if you're interested, you can still buy a ticket and/or just, you know, pay at the door. If you want to find out more about it, it's at oceansides-finest-basketball-square-site. And having said that, I want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope that you are able to gather with your family, friends. And our next council meeting will be in three weeks, three weeks. So we are now adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, December 7, 3:30 p.m. Thank you. Happy holidays.